Please join me in invocation. Dear Heavenly Mother, thank you for this opportunity and our help to allow us to get together, to meet and try to do the city's business. Help us as council members to be wise. Help those who are here to be eloquent and articulate in expressing the needs that we need to consider. Help us to be safe for the remaining week. Thank you again for allowing us to get together. Amen.
Amen. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice supreme.
Thank you very much. Court, call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorke. Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson. Councilmember Will Brasington. And I believe he may be joining us shortly, Mayor. Councilmember Russell Stahl. Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here. Yeah, before you, the minutes of June 26th will be submitted, approved as submitted unless there are any objections.
So moved.
They are so approved. With few folks who signed up to speak to us tonight, we have a three-minute clock on the wall, so please be mindful of that. And I'm happy to hear from Mr. Natazak first.
My name is Police Officer Natazak Gabor of the Israelite School of Universal Practical Knowledge, started out of One West 125th Street out of Harlem, New York, under Commander General Yehana. And what we, what our mission is, is of course, as we mentioned in the last council, is to educate Blacks, Hispanics, and Native Americans on their true heritage and culture according to the Bible. I'm here today as a follow-up to our, to our last visit to the city council. This previous Saturday, not, not, excuse me, the Saturday prior, we actually went out to the locations that we've been attempting to speak at for the past couple of months. After we were advised by the Greenville City Event Manager that those locations were booked due to some form of music event, no problem. If the location is booked, we stand down. We don't want any problems. However, we, to, to the spot that was recommended by the mayor to review that location and see if it'd be suitable for our speaking. And in the process, we actually went to those locations where we were previously denied a permit to go out and speak. And we noticed some interesting things. The first thing we noticed is that there were no events going on. There were no musicians out there. We actually have video footage showing that. Not only that, but at the, at One City Plaza, we noticed that there was another organization that was out speaking, and there was another organization that was passing out pamphlets and speaking, and they were allowed to be there seemingly without a permit. However, us trying to abide by the city ordinances, we aren't allowed to go out there. So that's my first order of business that I wanted to bring before the council. The second order of business is a follow-up to the McNeil Court development. We listened diligently. We actually reviewed the city council meeting even after the city council to make sure that we covered all of our bases. And so what we did is because we diligently defend people who are in those situations, so we went out to that location to review it. And what we discovered was disturbing. We discovered that, you know, based on the report that was given by the developer, they mentioned that the units that were, they were vacant, were vacant because they were in unlivable condition. We have video footage proving that to be completely untrue. And the final order of business is just a simple thing. We're in an attempt to feed the homeless in Greenville. Our goal is to eliminate that issue completely and catching those that slip through the cracks. So we went to the website to reach out to the homeless task force, and the information on the website is actually incorrect. Paulette Dunn.
Go ahead.
All right. Yeah, Paulette Dunn is no longer working for the UAC. So we, we, we had two email attempts to reach out so that we can join that task force, so that we can assist in that matter. But however, I was able to go down to the UAC and talk to the new COO, and, and we're going to move forward with helping with homelessness here in Greenville. So I just wanted to mention the incorrect information on the website. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. We have another person signing to speak, or is that Mr. Gabor? Is that all? It was you. Oh, okay, both of you are okay. All right, okay. That okay? All right, thank you. We have some special presentations tonight. Who is in charge of the presentations? Well, first, we have Eric Weiss.
Yes, Mr. Weiss.
Yeah. Oh, Eric, you're, you're, I'm sorry. Couple presentations, but you're doing your own presentation. Okay, thank you.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Eric Weissman, Executive Director of NEXT. Give you guys a real quick update on what we've been doing. Again, thank you for your continued support fostering entrepreneurship and innovation here in Greenville. So just want to go through the impact. We've been tracking our stats for the last six months now, and I handed that out to everybody. You'll see that on the slide coming up, as well as the future, how we're organizing ourselves for scale and impact, and then also how you guys, how everybody here can help continue us on this mission. So from an impact standpoint, we are looking at quality over quantity. You can see some spikes and some good movements there across the last six months of us tracking our personas on searcher, starter, mover, grower, of what those mean as far as the entrepreneurship lifecycle goes. Monthly event cadence is working. We're seeing new faces, making new connections, and that fear of missing out, that FOMO is real. People want to be involved and want to be engaged and feel like if they can't make it to everything, then, man, I need to get to that. So that, that's a good thing, that, that level of engagement. Over the past six months, we ran our first accelerator, 10 startups, came through a 10-week program. And I want to call your attention to custom donations. It's a quote at the bottom of that, that KPI list, a guy named Mike Smith, who's the CEO there. And he said he's been part of multiple programs, and while those were all good in their own respect, the next accelerator program was much more impactful from the others. And because we put founders first, and there's a network of support, and without a doubt, that's why he's moving his family here, all the way from Florence, South Carolina, but I think that's a good testament that this accelerator is drawing those, those companies in. Launchpad is our event in the spring geared towards early-stage companies. We've given over $150,000 over the past two years in goods and services to needy startups. And then Founder's Forum is our monthly cadence. I call it our bus stop events. With regularity, these things happen every month, just like a bus stop comes by every 10 minutes. You miss the last one, don't worry, stand here in another 10 minutes, another one will come by. But those are really bringing out not just startups, but people that may want to work with or work for startups in the future. There's a young lady that moved here from Atlanta three years ago. She works for Amazon, and she's tired of working for big companies. She wants to work for a small scaling company, and she's plugged into the next network to feel, to figure out where she could lead another company or be part of that growing team. So from a future standpoint, how we're organizing ourselves for scale and impact, we want to have a seamless interface with the newly-created Economic Development Corporation. We're continuing to widen the aperture of our supporters, looking for new partners such as Clemson-Hollingsworth, as well as doubling down on SCRA and Venture South from the current standpoint. So from a what do we do, how do we go to market, what is next, what is next do? We divide ourselves up into programs and services and events, and I won't go through too much of this, you can see that on the screen, but there's a mentoring continuum, not just one option to be a mentor or to be mentored by NEXT. And then three different education offerings from Accelerator. We just finished up our first set of Growth Labs today. This afternoon was our final of four Growth Labs. And then workshops, and then our events, we divide up into signature and community events. And the team structure is, is set up to scale, but also the perforations in between those silos. So there's, there's working back and forth between those organizations, or between the departments inside of our small organization to be as effective as possible. One of the, the best success stories of recent time is a company called ScopeStack, and it's a good example of a company that has gone through all of the next programming and really started before he was, before he left his current company. Raised $5 million recently, led by Cultivation Capital, which is co-founded by, came from St. Louis and has a presence here in Greenville. But they're going from five to 15 employees this year. He led our recent Founder's Forum on Entrepreneurial Operating System, and he's one of those people that, that while, while he's 10 feet in front of, of some of these other founders down the trail, that's meaningful. That is, there's still progress to be made, and there's a lot that he can teach and learn other founders behind him. So as far as the Greenville City Economic Development Corporation, I hope I got that right, the, the acronym is there, but I applaud the evolution. I think that's a, a smart move in our tight relationship with council, with city manager's office, and the existing economic development team will be, continue to be complimentary. So I look forward to that as, as far as how high-growth entrepreneurship and their teams continue to make this an attractive place to work or start or scale your own business. We're broadening our wingspan. Eventually, we will be autonomous from the chamber that's as planned, but there is an acknowledgement for additional seats to be at the table. It would take me very long to be here, that, an acknowledgement that Clemson wants to and needs to be more involved in the Greenville community, and we're making that happen. We're manifesting that, so that's exciting. And then Hollingsworth Funds isn't interested in getting more involved, and Michelin has outright spoken about getting more involved in the Greenville entrepreneurial ecosystem. We want to expand our current relationships with SCRA, the South Carolina Research Authority, and Venture South as far as the leading seed-stage investors here in the region, but also asking them the tough questions of the companies that they're not investing in. What are you, what are we missing? And how do we fix that here? So the questions that I want to ask of the, of our portfolios, and I think to hold ourselves accountable, is we need to be asking these startups, are you making money? Revenue, are you making money? Are you making revenue? And if so, at what scale? If no, how can we help? Are you making money? Are you raising money? If yes, at what scale? If no, how can we help? And then the final question is, are you hiring? It does come down to that, that level of economic development. And if you are, what are the type of roles that we're looking at? If not, how can we help? Is it about getting the universities more engaged in a meaningful way for that talent to be, to, to stay and retain here? So how everyone can help, we can use the hashtag Startup Greenville. That's something that we've been working closely, and I'll go over that in one more slide, about with the City Communications Group attends some of our, our events. We've got one coming up in two days at Southern Side Brewing. These are open to the community. This is a pure networking event, but then Founder's Forum is our monthly, the next one is August 13th, and that's going to be about accounting. So it's important, not just who's on the stage and what you're learning from that person on the stage, but also who you're sitting next to in the audience. Continue to push people our way, and we'll get them on the bus. Here recently, we've been patched up with Torev Motors, a company from Alexandria, Virginia. Mike Panasco and the team had some inbound interest from them. They're looking around the ecosystem to come into, this is the first time I've heard this term today, but the battery belt, we're being known as the battery belt. I think that's an interesting, from a, from EV motor standpoint. So Torev Motors is coming, Artemis, as an Australian company, looking to have their North American headquarters here in Greenville. So those are just two that we work in tandem with the economic development team here, but we'll continue to do that, and we'll continue to speak startup and get them engaged. So from a startup Greenville standpoint, we enjoy a seamless relationship with city communications. They supply the pipes, we supply the fuel. There's an involved job board that is now on that website. There's a resource map. This is version two of the resource map. There's 66 different nodes across this ecosystem. 66 different ways people can get plugged in and engaged with the entrepreneurial ecosystem of Greenville. So I'll leave you with the, our final ask is our big signature event, NEXT Venture Summit, is coming up September 12th and 13th. This is a two-day event for the first time. Day one, based on feedback, direct feedback from startups and investors. Day one will be intentional matchmaking between startups and investors. Intentional curated assets between, we want to have 80 startups pitching to 50 different investors, all from throughout the region, the broader region of Western North Carolina, the upstate, Eastern Tennessee, and Northern Georgia, all to put the spotlight on, on Greenville. Day two will be our traditional summit, where we're highlighting the 10 most exciting startups in the region, filtered in some killer content along the way. And again, we're, we're targeting some new records there for startups and investors in the region. That's the top line. Any questions?
I've got one. Eric, thanks for being here. Good to see you.
My pleasure.
What is, comment a little more if you can about the as planned autonomy from the chamber? What does that look like now? And when roughly by the game plan would you have, with all the scraps full at all time?
So right now, the, the chamber is one of our three major contributors, along with the city, the county, and then we get some money from the state through the Department of Commerce. As planned, that was a five-year commitment, and at the end of that five-year commitment, we're underneath the chamber's foundation currently, operating under their 501(c)(3) status. So it's about getting autonomy and being, having our own tax ID number, our own 501(c)(3) status, organizational documents, and things like that.
Yeah, but that, but that's got, you said five-year plan, are we live to the year?
Two, two years, sorry. 2025.
Eric, can I?
Go ahead. Yeah, any questions?
This is, this is great, and I love charts and graphs. And it's probably on here, so you, you focused on one of your success stories, five jobs growing to 15.
Yep.
For me, the metric I look at is how many companies have we attracted or started up? How many companies? And that's showing their stage that they're in. And then how many jobs have they created? And have they stayed in Greenville? If they were started here, you know, I'm, I'm hoping we have them staying here, because that was really the whole point. So I guess it all gets back to jobs, jobs, jobs. How many jobs are they creating with their companies? And I think they ought to be accountable for that. At the same time, that I want to know that, obviously including pay, those things that are tied to what types of jobs, I would want to know for our investment, what barriers are they facing? The "they" being your, your customers in here to building the workforce they need? And is there anything the city needs to be doing on that? But mostly, I'm looking at, you know, the city has been a financial partner, and from that, how many jobs have been created in Greenville as a result of that partnership?
I can find that out. Yeah, headcount is an important issue, right? Because these companies, and I think that's a good juxtaposition of the traditional economic development of, you know, the major plant announcements, and it's a big, you know, construction as well as, you know, double-digit, triple-digit jobs. We're never going to be able to compete with that.
Oh, sure. Yeah, you're a smaller scale, but for example, and I don't know which slide it was back where you had the spotlight on your main story. You know, is, is that one of several? And then, you know, is ScopeStack staying in Greenville? Or then are we losing them to Charlotte or Atlanta? Those kinds of things. If we're launching them, are they staying?
Yes. Yeah. So ScopeStack, just to finish that anecdote, yes, they are staying. Yes, these will be local jobs. And I would say they're one of a dozen of the 118 that we have. You know, you're not going to hit a home run every time up. But, but I also agree with you vehemently that it's our job, it's my role, to find out what's not working and to fix that. And as we do get that, that inevitable brain drain, why is it happening and how do we stop it? And how can NEXT play a role in that?
And I think of it as our job is to make sure that the investment is having a measurable impact. And the only way I know to measure that is jobs and what those jobs are paying. And if there's another metric, you want to volunteer, I, I welcome that. And then in the same light, are there barriers they're facing, the entrepreneurial leaders in terms of filling the workforce they need?
Got it.
Just a quick tack on while you're collecting metrics. I think it's always helpful to have perspective, too. So whether it's our own local perspective, how are we doing compared to how we used to be doing? Or, you know, whatever aspirational similar efforts and issues are out there. Because if we're retaining, that's great, but not if we find out that we're retaining at a much lower rate than elsewhere.
Than where we should, peer cities or peer regions.
And again, you may, you may have all that, but if not, if you're seeking that out, I would just add that, because for me, that's always been the final ingredient that really adds impact to whatever's being shared.
Yeah, I think, you know, again, anecdotally, I think we're holding our own. And I think that we've, we've, we've got some room for improvement. If not, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be good for all. We need to be that, that advancing the ball down forward. I think it's important for us to look up and out of our woodchuck hole and see what other people are doing and how are we competing with that? And what are founders that are coming and visiting other funders, whether they're in the Research Triangle or, you know, somewhere in another part of the country? What are they hearing and what are they seeing? I think a lot of it is going to come down to capital in loosening up that, that capital, that really early-stage capital. And that's back to those tough questions that I want to be asking and hold accountable to some of those that, that they're holding that ball as far as investing in and understanding how scaling companies get started and grow. But if that money isn't coming back here to Greenville from these companies that are headquartered here, what can we do to fix that? And how can we, how can we help?
Real quick. Thanks, Eric. Great presentation. You guys do great work. And I'm not going to put you on the spot by asking you where we are right now on these numbers, but over the next year, I'd really like to see you guys do a little bit more on diversity issues, trying to get the makeup of people who are going through this program, who are being touched by it, to look more like what our community looks like. And if that inquiry, if that, if that, you know, means that you guys have to recruit, you know, whatever, there's the Minority Business Accelerator, there's some other, you know, programs that are going on. Nate with them, but, but, you know, it's real important to me, at least, that this program also be a launchpad for, for everyone in our community. Okay?
Yep, understood. And, and that is where we're at with some of the conversations with some of those other organizations that I mentioned of how do we shine a brighter light on that and work in, in conjunction with the Minority Business Accelerator and Village Launch so that there's a progression and also an education of this is what, this is what funders look at. And not that venture capital is the root for everyone. It, it's not. But as long as educating and illuminating that path, how can we leverage our network to be that convener, to be that gatherer, as well as, you know, educator? Okay. But I'd like to follow up a few separately on that.
Okay, cool. Let's do that.
That was kind of cooked into the next program from the beginning, though, when we launched this a couple of years ago. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Jack, you're up next with a number of presentations for tonight.
Standing. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. Fortunately, one of our, one of our presentations asked for a reprieve to come to at another time. The Rolling Tigers, unfortunately, we could only get four members here tonight. It's a team of 14. Their coaches weren't available either, so they asked if we could do it during the school year, where there's a better chance that we get the entire team together.
It makes sense.
And I don't like this, they really didn't want to have just four of their members receive that honor.
All right, thank you.
If we could reschedule that.
Sure.
Item number two, though, is Joshua Powell. And it is my honor, as the city's ADA Coordinator, present Joshua Powell.
Joshua.
Josh is a resident of the city of Greenville and has represented the city and the USA at this year's Special Olympics World Games held in Berlin, Germany this year. Josh and his father Jim Powell competed in the Unified Bowling, Unified Bowling Pairs, people with and without intellectual disabilities to participate as a team. Josh became involved with Special Olympics in 1993 and has competed in bowling, swimming, and track and field. Aside from competing, Josh has established himself as a global messenger for the Special Olympics and has performed boldly for several events around the world, including Special Reception at this year's, in Germany, at the US Embassy this year. Josh has earned two degrees from Bob Jones University for Ministry and Education. He is also a classical singer. Josh credits a single phrase, this is, this is really striking, Josh credits a single phrase in the Special Olympics oath, which is, "Be brave in the attempt." He credits this phrase for changing the path of his life as it reminds him, reminds him that his disabilities are also his greatest strengths. It is with great pleasure to report that Josh represented our city and country very well at the Special Olympics World Games. Josh and his dad placed third, fourth in their Unified Bowling Events, and Josh also placed fifth in his Single Bowling Event. Josh, we are excited and honored to have you as a citizen of our city, and we would like to recognize your many accomplishments, medals, of course, and most importantly, by you being brave in the attempt. Congratulations, Josh. Thank you. And if possible, Josh would love to meet with you afterwards for a picture.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. And included swimming? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Well, okay. Tara.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It is my pleasure to introduce Tonjolyn Coakley, the first Vice President of the National Council of Negro Women for Greenville County, and a member of the Executive Council of National Association for Advancement of Colored People. Tonjolyn will be sharing details regarding this year's Juneteenth essay contest as part of the annual Juneteenth celebration at Unity Park.
Right, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It brings me great pleasure, as education is a main focus of both organizations, the National Council of Negro Women, as well as the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. So with that, we were ecstatic that we could join in with the city to present scholarship. So with that, we were ecstatic that we could join in with the city to present scholarship, scholarship, scholarship. So our first scholarship recipient for the national, for NAACP is Christopher Robinson. Christopher Robinson is a recent graduate and will be attending his first year of Claflin University in the fall. So Christopher, if you could join us at this moment, come on up and, um, so Christopher will read for you quickly his essay on Juneteenth.
Uh, thank y'all for having me today. Juneteenth is an annual holiday celebrated on June 19th. In 1865, when Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, he read General Order III, which said, "All slaves in Texas were free." It had taken over two years for the slaves to be free as the Emancipation Proclamation had already been in effect. Today, Juneteenth commemorates the end of slavery in the United States and is celebrated by African-Americans. Juneteenth is not a time for mourning, but it is a time to ref- reflect on struggles and offerings of those who fought for freedom and came before us. It is time to celebrate the progress that has been made while honoring the work that has been done. Juneteenth also serves as a call to action for the work that still needs to be done so all Americans are treated fairly and with respect. Juneteenth is personal to me because I can trace my ancestry back to slavery. My family can trace their heritage back to Newton Sullivan, who was born a slave and became free. Newton Sullivan is a pillar of the church founded in 1865 that I attend today, Reedy Fort Baptist Church in Simpsonville, South Carolina. His legacy lives on today through me. Because of him and his efforts, I have witnessed many in my generation that are in my family and church family, attend college and become successful. I have witnessed, Juneteenth is a holiday, but it means so much more to me. It is personal for me to make my ancestry, ancestors proud because of hardships and sacrifice they made for me. I've been personally affected by it. I commemorate it and vow to add to the legacy that was created for me. The NAACP is an organization that fights for civil rights. It was founded in 1909 and its main purpose is to serve minorities that face unjust treatment by the law. The NAACP fights disparity by making sure individuals have equal access, protection and opportunities guaranteed by the United States Constitution. This organization has challenged discriminatory laws such as Jim Crow and segregation. The NAACP has fought disparity through the legal court system. And round versus the Board of Education, the NAACP successfully won the case by challenging segregation in the school system. Because of this, schools had to be integrated and segregation in schools became unconstitutional. Another way this organization fights to eliminate disparity is through its empowerment programs. The NAACP offers a range of programs to help the community such as education, health and wellness, youth programs and others. The NAACP plays a role in our, plays a role in our community in showing us that progress is possible because they fight disparity through legal issues and they fight for equal treatment for all citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
So let me explain to you a little bit about the essay they had to write. So they had to tell what Juneteenth meant to them and how the organization that they were applying for the scholarship from, be it NCNW or NAACP, how they can help in bridging the gap and disparities in the community. So that's why you heard Christopher talking a lot about NAACP. So our second recipient, who is Mackenzie McDuffie, on this evening, she's working as well as her father Laverne. Now, they were able to be with us at Juneteenth, but it's one of her father's criteria that if you're not sick, you can go to work. So Dad is holding up on what he's saying for her to do. So she is working, but he's working also. So hopefully in the future, we will have the opportunity to hear Mackenzie's essay and what she wrote about disparities in NCNW. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is his parents here? Christopher, do you have your parents?
Yes.
Please stand up. Thank y'all so much.
For our next presentation, we have a video. Let them queue that up. National Recreation and, there's like a, what's that? Close out first. Perfect, okay. The National Recreation.
Fireworks or?
Um, and Park Association, the NRPA, the nation's leading advocate for parks and recreation, recently recognized the city's Parks, Recreation and Tourism Department and Unity Park with its Best in Innovation in Park Design Award. Selected by the NRPA National Awards and Scholarship Committee, NRPA Innovation Awards recognize parks and recreation professionals and agencies nationwide that have improved and revitalized their communities through innovative practices in park design, health and wellness, conservation and equity. Unity Park was chosen in part because of the innovative design that helped transform a historic brownfield into public recreation space that mitigates flooding issues and improves water quality. In addition to addressing major environmental concerns, the design restored eight acres of urban wetlands, created state-of-the-art recreational space for the community and land banked acreage for affordable housing development on the park's perimeter. I am pleased to be here tonight to recognize the collective efforts of the city team that worked alongside our elected officials, neighborhood residents and community stakeholders to build Unity Park, a park that incorporated history to foster community. I'll ask that the following staff please stand as they are recognized. Jeff Waters, Senior Capital Projects Manager. Jeff was hired in 2012 to oversee the development of Unity Park. Jeff will be the first to share that the initial challenges were significant. For 10 years, however, he diligently worked alongside elected officials, city staff, members of the community and consultants to develop the Unity Park Master Plan and eventually the full design package that provided the framework for a state-of-the-art park. Barrett Armstrong, Senior Urban Designer. Prior to coming to the city, Barrett was part of the MKSK Studios team that worked with the city and the community to formulate the design of Unity Park. During construction, Barrett served as the project representative for MKSK. Greg Dawkins, Capital Projects Manager. During construction of the park, Greg oversaw, oversaw the earthwork, paving, stormwater systems and utility infrastructure installation during park construction. Sean, I don't believe he's here today. He was also our Capital Projects Manager on this project as well. I applaud this group of leaders for their innovative thinking, collaboration and hard work. I would also like to recognize the senior Parks and Grounds Unity Park Team, including Stacy Schaefer, Talina Stewart, Matt Simmerall, Ernest Chapman, David Suarez and Howard Thompson. Would please stand. Since the park opened a little over a year ago, this team continues to find innovative ways to improve and beautify Unity Park. These improvements include the addition of over 200 plants to create pollinator and monarch habitats, 24 new trees throughout the park and along the Swamp Rabbit Trail, over 270 tons of top dressing sand to the green spaces, 16 gravel pits to aid and prevent wet areas in the turf and much more. This team takes a tremendous amount of pride and ownership in their work, so much so that I often have to tell them, or stop them from working more than an eight-hour day. I cannot thank them enough for their hard work and their dedication. It is through these efforts, along with the great promotional work of our communications department, that Unity Park has quickly become a top destination for our residents and visitors with, and I checked this this morning, over 850,000 users alone on the Swamp Rabbit Trail. To close, I'd like to leave you with something shared by Mary Duckett. So I'm glad she's here today and she provided this beautiful photo. Amazingly enough, she has this photo that was taken right before the park opened and the rainbow spans the river in the park. In sharing this photo, Mary had said, "I think this is what heaven looks like." She continued on to say, "This park is about embracing one another and learning from each other and it's about a community coming together to create a place where everyone is welcome." Thank you.
That is beautiful. Well, Mary, do you have anything to say? That is your picture. I remember that. Wasn't that a miracle? Wasn't that a miracle that David, this is before it opened?
Yes.
It was absolutely astounding. Yeah.
Just a beginning.
Yeah. And I, I want to, I thank you for joining. Thank everyone who was recognized tonight and all the folks. But Tara, also thank you for your outstanding stewardship ever since and all the great things we're working on now and, and will be in the future. But thank you so, so, so much for that and for laying this up for, for an award. Well, really the first of many awards I think we're going to see because it's such a model from around the country. And I also want to thank, of course, Mary and everybody, the hundreds and hundreds of people participated. There's one thing that just sometimes gets lost in all this. I hope somebody heard about Jeff working in 2012. It's been a long project and literally hundreds of people participated in the design of the park. I mean, there is no element, there is no element of that park that wasn't touched by the neighborhood. If somebody said, "I want to see this," as opposed to something else. Of course, the Children's Playground, most famous of all, because there was no children's spray park in the beginning at all. It was schoolchildren who participated in the process around 2015 or so. Who said, "We want a spray park." How are we going to pay for that? And, uh, look, we have it now and every element that's been built so far and all the great elements that are coming up next with the tower and with the, uh, with the baseball field and everything else, there's so much more. But the citizen participation, citizens, the residents who made all the decisions and we just implemented them and look what we have. It's just a place of such great beauty. But thank you, Tara, and all, the whole staff for that. Beautiful. All right. Few items to take place. Consent agenda. Mr. Speaker?
So, moving second.
For the overall.
Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Basington. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Wright.
All right. Want to note, this is the first full city council meeting with our new city manager, Shannon. And just look at the agenda she gave us tonight. This is like, oh, you know, they're like, they're doing a double take. I've never seen her do anything like that. So, well, good job, Shannon. Keep it up. We can only handle one item at a time. We actually had a very late, the executive session before this on some very naughty issues. So it's nice to have a little relief and certainly positive presentations after all of that. So thank you for that. But Shannon, welcome. Do you, you have any comments or?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I'm just very excited to be here and thank y'all for the opportunity to serve the community. It's been an exciting couple of weeks and I look forward to hopefully 10 years in this position. Thank you very much.
You really had it down to days, 13 days, right?
13 days, thank you.
Okay. All righty, thank you very much. Thank you, Council. Meeting adjourned.